There we go. We're starting outside the organizational meeting. So at this time, we'll ask the school board members to place names and nomination for chair.
Dr. Jones, I would like to nominate Susan Carney as chair.
I second that nomination.
Okay, any other nominations for chair? Mr. Kimball?
I have a comment.
Are you gonna stand?
Oh, sorry. I did not assume you were standing.
This must be monumental.
Well, it might be monumental. As many of you are aware, a great leader, Nelson Mandela, is on the throes of a death store, perhaps already there, which I don't, perhaps I'm not caught up entirely to the most recent news. But I noticed an article in last week's paper about him and some of his legacy. And I feel, pardon my diving into this for a minute. Mandela fully grasped the importance of political pluralism. As president, he did not arrest his critics. He embraced reconciliation, fulfilling the promise of his prison-era correspondence, prison era that lasted 27 years. In an April 1985 letter while he was still in prison, he wrote a letter to a white woman who led the anti-apartheid group Black Sash. He wrote, "The ideals that we cherish, our fondest dreams and fervent hopes, may not be realized in our lifetime, but that is besides the point. The knowledge that in your day, you did your duty, lived up to the expectations of your fellow men, is in itself a rewarding experience and magnificent achievement. True leadership," this is more the author of this article goes on to say, "true leadership, the sort of visionary leadership that Mandela is famed for, leaves a legacy that outlasts its originators' mortal flesh. It bequeaths an idea that can live on without him or her, an idea that will take root and flower despite the intense and sometimes ugly obstacles thrown at it. And reconciliation, that painstakingly tough, monumental, but necessary project, is one that belongs to all of us now." I'd like to submit that the endeavor of public education is in itself a endeavor of reconciliation, and that it's intended to level playing field among children so that as they enter a new generation, they have a relatively equal chance at success. That doesn't come easily. It calls for the bridging of many gaps, economic, social, and otherwise. And I think this board, this city, has done some commendable work in public education. And I would ask that we look not just at the rather short-term things that we're about to discuss tonight, but that we consider our heritage as a city that became independent for the purpose of a better public education. And then built on that by pioneering in many new areas, taking risk, but always seeking the reconciliation that risk often requires. Whether it was daycare, or whether it was all-day kindergarten, international baccalaureate, virtual learning, summer backpacks, all of these are just somewhat recent examples of the kind of pattern of reconciliation that we've been undertaking, and I think it would behoove us to continue. So I just ask, perhaps if some others have some comment on where they think we ought to be going in this time and day as we seek to elect a new leader, a new set of leaders. And if you have some comment, I'd appreciate hearing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Kimball, I'll actually read the segment that goes under. After all nominations have been made, roll call vote shall be taken with each board member, naming the person for whom he or she is voting. A nominee must receive a majority, four, of the votes to be elected. The roll call vote will be repeated until a chairman is elected. The newly-elected chairman shall then preside over the election of a vice-chairman or woman, following the same procedure.
Person.
Person.
Very good. So the nominee is Susan P. Carney. Mr. Castillo.
Yes, Ms. Carney.
Ms. Carney, very good. Mr. Chaney.
Ms. Carney.
Ms. Highland.
Ms. Carney.
Ms. Carney.
Ms. Carney.
Mr. Lawrence.
Ms. Carney.
Mr. Rasnick.
Ms. Carney.
And Mr. Sharp.
I'll abstain, thank you.
Congratulations, Ms. Carney, you're the board chair.
I appreciate it, more than you would know. Moving on to the next item on the agenda is the election of the vice-chair. I'll ask for nominations for vice-chair at this time.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to nominate John Lawrence for vice-chair.
Thank you. Are there other nominations at this time for a vice-chair?
Madam Chairman, I would nominate Justin Castillo.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Are there other nominations at this time for a vice-chairman? All right, then our procedure is to move to the vote. Mr. Kimball?
Very good. Mr. Castillo.
Mr. Castillo.
Mr. Chaney.
Mr. Lawrence.
Ms. Highland.
Mr. Lawrence.
Ms. Carney.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Rasnick.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Sharp.
Castillo.
Mr. Lawrence did receive the majority of the votes, five to two, and is our new vice-chairman. Congratulations, Mr. Lawrence.
Thank you, congratulations. All right, moving along to the next item. The next item on our organizational agenda this evening is to set the date, time, and place of regular school board meetings for this fiscal year. The motion that is before us on board docs calls for a regular schedule of meetings, including the second and fourth Tuesdays of each month at 8:30. Oh, did I miss the clerk? Sorry, 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 sorry. Let me take all that back and rewind. The next item on the agenda is to appoint the clerk and deputy clerk of the school board.
Madam Chairman, I would move that the school board appoint Hunter Kimball clerk and Martha Goodell deputy clerk of the school board for terms ending June 30th, 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. And is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed or any abstentions? All right, thank you. That motion passes. Congratulations. We'll try to be better behaved this year than last year. Yeah, I'm not sure we'll do it, but we will try. All right, the next item on the agenda now is to set the date, time, and place of regular school board meetings. The motion here indicates meetings the second and fourth Tuesday of each month at 8:30 in these chambers with work sessions as needed. At the central office, this last fiscal year, we had changed our meeting schedule, and we're meeting only once a month for a formal meeting. That would be the second Tuesday of the month. So at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion and a second, and then we'll discuss whether this is what we want to do, to keep it the same as last year, where they want to go back to two meetings. So is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the school board establish a schedule of regular meetings to include the second and fourth Tuesday of each month at 8:30 p.m. in the chambers of City Hall. Work sessions be held 7:30 p.m. as needed. Optional work sessions will start at 7:30 p.m. at the central office conference room.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Lawrence, thank you very much. Now, I'll open the floor for discussion if there are things people want to say about this. Mr. Rasnick, I see you leaning forward.
So yes, I have a couple of comments. One, I kind of defer to, I really want to hear the opinion of the chair and the vice-chair, especially considering I'll only be serving out six months of this two-year time, or actually, one-year timeframe. But I actually prefer this year's schedule. There's no reason that we can't call for formal meetings when necessary. I think that the board should be striving to do more, it's not less meetings, just more work sessions. I think that technically speaking, one formal meeting in a month with the option to call for formal meetings if official business needs to be held, votes, that that's fine. But I think the idea of striving for more work sessions where we can sort of really deliberate is probably a worthwhile goal. I'm not sure we completely accomplished it, but we started on that course this year, and I think it's something we should continue. I kind of wish I'd have jumped in, I probably would have just done that amended motion right out of the gates and gone back the other way. But that's, those are my thoughts, and I would definitely entertain a motion to amend to that.
Mr. Chaney?
Yeah, I concur. I think, given the topics that we're going to be dealing with in the next year, starting with tonight, technology and the fact that there's no way you're going to digest the technology piece in one meeting, you're going to have to have real work sessions, I think you just ought to be realistic about the way business is going to come forward and deal with it.
Yes, I mean, thank you. Ms. Highland, any thoughts?
Yeah, I guess I would have to say I agree as well, because I feel like a lot of the times when we have a work session before a regular scheduled meeting, it's rushed. And if we can, you know, dedicate a specific time for work sessions alone, I think we probably do get more done. So I agree.
Okay. Mr. Lawrence.
All right, I agree, and actually, I was going to raise, when we talk about the remote access, to make sure that we specify that it's not just meetings, regular meetings, but it's also work sessions. Because to me, being able to call in for that, even if you're just listening, is a whole lot more important so that when you have the formal meetings, you're ready, no matter where you've been for the work sessions.
Right. Okay, thank you. Mr. Sharp, any thoughts?
Just a quick follow-up on Mr. Lawrence's comment. We do have an interpretation from the VSBA staff attorney indicating that work sessions are meetings. That was relayed to us weeks ago or so. So I agree, we should observe that. And I appreciate the comments that other board members have made as to trying to achieve a greater depth in our review of particular topics, and to the extent that additional work sessions can help with that, I certainly will support that idea. I'm a little fuzzy on what the amended version now would look like. But let me just see if I've caught this. It would be a regular meeting on the second Tuesday, work session on the fourth Tuesday. Is that a fair statement?
So actually, what I would do is, if I can, I would actually just say is, the school board establish a regular scheduled meeting to include, a regular scheduled meeting on the second Tuesday. Because later it says optional work sessions will start at 6:30 or 7:30, or work sessions will be held at 7:30 as needed. So you don't have to really constrain yourself to the winds, because you may actually, I mean, the board can determine when work sessions are held at their own, you know, at the pleasure of the chair, recommendation of the superintendent. I don't think you have to set it. The truth is, and I'll kind of speak to this a little more when I get a chance after everybody else has had a chance to talk.
Okay.
You may even do more than that, considering the stuff we have in front of us.
Right. Okay, so Karen, can we just hold that thought for a second, because I want to hear from Justin as well, and then we'll get to that.
Nothing to add.
Nothing to add, okay, very good. I would simply add that I would support one meeting a month rather than two. I would actually support two regularly-scheduled work sessions each month. I think we do have the flexibility to schedule them at will, but for the public's benefit, I think it's always helpful that they know and can anticipate exactly when we're going to be meeting, rather than trying to follow us around. So that would be my opinion, and I'd like to see, we have these 30-minute periods before our closed sessions, I'd like to continue those. I think those are good opportunities for Tony to provide us with quick updates, for the board to talk about new items they'd like to add on the agenda, and for just kind of informal conversation of that nature with the additional work sessions. So now I'm going to go back around, Mr. Chaney.
The only other point I'd make is to try to get the idea of Tuesday, that generally work sessions will be Tuesdays, so that again, people can expect that Tuesdays are the night that the school board is doing something. I think that's important, because it's hard to follow meeting schedules.
So could we say that we would have our regular meetings on the second Tuesday, and work sessions on the third and fourth Tuesdays? And the first Tuesday would be our Tuesday off, or would be our backstop if we need another work session?
I do have a couple of third Tuesdays, where I'm the rep for Region Four, serving on VHSL, but it only happens three or four times, so just so there'll be a few months where it couldn't be three.
Okay. You can call me, you know, but I'd just soon lay it out for the public, so they know what weeks where, yeah? So with that, I-
One question I have about this, though, is there are times when we have to have votes more than once a month.
Yeah.
So how do we address that? Would we turn a work session into a regular meeting as needed? Does it have to be, so do we have to say that, or doesn't, we just know?
As long as you have it in time.
Okay. Yeah, that's the way we're handling that. Any other questions, concerns, thoughts down on this end? So I think what we would need now is a motion to- Oh, yes.
I think one question is, my hope for the future is that we will also have some task forces doing some work on discrete issues.
Uh huh.
And I think we need to build in an allowance for that, for those groups to convene. I don't think we always have to have, we need to build in time for that kind of approach, be it on facilities, technology-
Right.
-strategy, or what have you. But I think we need to make an allowance for that as well.
Okay. Do you have a specific suggestion that you're thinking of how to do that, or?
Well, I think somewhat it depends on how many and what nature-
Yeah.
-they have, and how frequently they need. It might be every other month suffices, and it might be that there's a huge queue to get through meetings for the next few months. I can't see my crystal ball telling me the details.
Great. I would suggest that that topic we take up on the 23rd of July, when we're going to take our first look at the work plan. I think the work plan and priorities that the board sets for the year will drive those ad hoc task force and groups. And I think that's probably the right time to talk about not only those task force and groups, but our approach to our regular liaisons that we have as well, based on folks' interests and the work and the priorities. I think that can all come together, if that makes sense to the rest of the board. Yeah, I'm seeing some head shaking. Okay, because we know there's a ton of stuff. I mean, just based on last, Saturday before last, when we had the vision in the community forum, a lot of things came out of that, and we have things that I know individual board members would like to be here. Okay, so thank you for that, Mr. Castillo. So can we have a motion to amend Ms. Highland's motion, and we'll do that first?
Let me give it a shot.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'd like to amend the original motion to state that the school board establish a schedule that includes a regular meeting on the second Tuesday of each month, and work sessions scheduled for the third and fourth Tuesday of every month. Actually, what we should say is the following two Tuesdays of every month, because there may not be a fourth. Optional work sessions will start at 7:30 at the central office in the conference room, 800 West Broad Street, Suite 203, Falls Church.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion, or can we call the vote on this? All in?
There's only a fourth Tuesday.
Okay, I was trying to think if that was-
Sometimes there's a fifth Tuesday, maybe?
Yeah, I guess that was my-
But not a third?
Sorry.
All right. So can we call the vote on the amendment? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed or abstentions? No, all right. Now we can move along to vote on the motion as amended. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And are there any opposed or are there any abstentions? All right, thank you. The next action item on our organizational portion of the show is a resolution authorizing the school board officials to sign special warrants.
One motion, please.
Whereas the school board of the City of Falls Church, Virginia desires to make payment of compensation when such compensation has been earned and is due for, one, all employees under written contract, and, two, all other employees whose rates of pay have been established by the school board or other evidence of service performed, and, three, for payment of approved services, including contracts. And whereas the Code of Virginia at Section 22.1 hyphen 122 provides for the payment of compensation when such compensation has been earned and is due as stated above, and now therefore be it resolved in accordance with the authority granted under this amended code section, this, the school board of City of Falls Church hereby directs Tony Jones, Division Superintendent, or Lisa High, Assistant Superintendent, to issue and sign all special warrants, said special warrants to be drawn on the city treasure of the City of Falls Church payable from City School funds and payment of obligations described in the first paragraph of this resolution. These special warrants shall be countersigned by Hunter Kimball clerk or Martha Goodell, Deputy Clerk of the School Board.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Highland. Is there a discussion or question? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And are there any opposed or abstentions? All right, thank you. That motion is carried. Next, we approve the designated person to attend school board meetings in the absence of the superintendent. Is there a motion here to approve Ms. High as that person?
I move that the school board designate Assistant Superintendent Lisa High to attend the school board meetings in the absence of the superintendent for the 2013-2014 school year.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for that. And any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And any opposed or any abstentions? Okay, very good. And then the last item, 2.07, is something we've done for the past four years, which is the adoption by the school board of the Code of Civility. I have here a fresh copy for signature. The code has not changed since last year, and the year before, and the year before. So I'd ask for a motion on this item.
Madam Chair, I move that the Falls Church City School Board adopt the Code of Civility as a standard to guide the school board members in interactions with each other and with the community.
Thank you, Ms. Highland.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed or abstentions? Okay, that item is adopted as well. I'm going to take this, and I'm going to pass it down to Mr. Chaney on my left to sign, and we'll pass it down the dais. And that always gets posted on our website, so the community understands the standards we've set for ourselves, which I think are outstanding ones. And I want to recognize Councilman Ron Pepe as being the first person to institute this for our school board, when he was leading us a number of years ago. And I think that was a great thing in his part. The last thing, just quickly, before we go to closed meeting, I did ask Tony, during a work session, we had a brief discussion about this organization meeting, and about elections coming up, and new members of the board being seated in January, and whether we would continue to have organizational meetings in July, or move it to January, or what the heck we would do. And Tony has checked in with the VSBA about the Virginia law on this subject, and so if he would just give us a quick update, I just want the board to know, and then we will, in a work session sometime within the next couple of months, have a more in-depth discussion among the board about our thinking about leaving July 1, or move to January 1 with new elections. So this is really for information. Dr. Jones?
I did reach out to Wendell, again, through VSBA, VSBA Attorney, and the code does not really, Virginia code does not really specifically address when a city changes the actual election date. What it does address is that when you elect a chair, the chair must be elected for a year. So could you come back in January and do another election? You know, Wendell is of the opinion, unofficially opinion, that yes, you could, because it's not addressed in the code. However, if somebody did want to appeal it, you know, you could fight it, because it's not addressed. But he felt we actually need guidance from our own attorney, so that would either be Tom or John Foster that would want to give us guidance on that. John Foster indicated today that we would also need to look at the city charter, which, so he was looking at the charter side. So it's something we'll come back and discuss again. So it can be done, it's just not really addressed in the code.
Yeah, and it looks like there may be a little confusion about the state law and the city charter, and we want to make sure that those things, if they're not synced up, get synced up as we move the election, so we all know what's going to happen going forward. So that's just a quick update. Are there any questions for Dr. Jones about that?
I have just one. When you get the legal advice, the one thing I would consider, I can't remember what sport it is, like when somebody gets hurt, that the other person doesn't play for a little bit of, like, comity, but maybe inquire into, you know, one of the remedies for this would be if the chair and vice-chair resigned effective, you know, December 31st, and then whether or not that would constitute, basically, do you hold a new election, which I think you do. So sort of in front of a new school board policy, if you chose to, that might be the remedy that fixes it until you fix the policy.
Right. Okay. And not to mention perhaps fixing the charter, but I think it's an important question for us to have some discussion about, because I think there are arguments for leaving it July, and I think there are arguments for moving it to January. I think this board needs to discuss those and make sure we feel comfortable. All right.
Madam Chair, if I might, I looked at the code. I think the code is less ambiguous than maybe our preliminary information. I think Section 22.1-72 of the code makes it clear that July or January is available as an option, subject to check-
Yes.
...with the city charter. But I think as a practical matter, it's imperative that we recognize the impact of the change of elections on the organizational continuity of the board. And if we have to change the charter, so be it. But I think we need to sync up to January, else we'll have, I think, a bit of chaos. And if we go to resignations in December, that means we're going to have two elections every year. So I think we really need to recognize the downstream effects of the change of the election date, and accordingly adjust our organizational meeting.
I think that we absolutely need to recognize that, but I think that I'd rather than have five minutes of discussion about that now, I'd just assume that we have in a workstation or one of our 30 minutes before the meeting session, an opportunity to, for all board members to weigh in on that, but yeah.
Absolutely, but I think looking at that code provision would be a good first step, because it does provide a flow chart.
Yeah, we did that today, and Tony has that, and it clearly can be January or July for an elected board. I think what our charter currently says is July, but the one thing that's kind of sticky is it says can be January or July, but says one-year term. So we're just kind of in this funny place where those two things are a little bit conflicted. So we just need to kind of lay it all out. I think also, just for me as one person, I think if, I think it could be as chaotic to switch leadership in July as it would not be. So we just need to schedule this for full board discussion, and then we'll decide. Okay, so now we're going to close meeting.
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose: to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, staff appointments and staff resignations, long-term medical leave and EPED assignments, and student matters under Section 2.2-3711A2, in particular, non-resident tuition student and interrupted residents.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Mr. Chaney.
Yes.
Ms. Highland.
Yes.
Ms. Carney.
Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
Mr. Rastnik.
Yes.
And Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Can we please reconvene to an open meeting and certify the closed meeting?
I move that the board reconvene to an open meeting. And can we certify, please? That, oh, here we go. Whereas the Falls Church Public School Board has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative reported vote in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which the certification applies, and, two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in a closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Mr. Castillo. Mr. Chaney.
Yes.
Ms. Highland.
Yes.
Ms. Carney.
Yep.
Mr. Lawrence.
Yes.
Mr. Rastnik.
Yes.
Mr. Sharp. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, it's 8:10. And was our, this meeting publicized to start at 8:30? I'm trying to decide. We can just roll on through? Yeah, I was kind of confused by these different times here. So, do we need to wait for business until?
Closed meeting from 7:45, and then the work session doesn't start till 8:30. So, we're in the regular meeting.
Okay, so that 7:30 was what kind of time. Thank you very much. All right, moving right along to the adoption of the, oh, the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item is adoption of the agenda.
Move that we adopt the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor, please say aye. Yes.
Raise a point of order. I had requested a look at bylaw 2.15 in addition to the other bylaw that we'll be taking up this evening. That bylaw concerns student liaison, and because it concerns the in-regular meeting activities and those will not be needed to apply this meeting, I would gladly defer action on that this meeting. But I would like for us to schedule to take action on it so that it is available before our next, or at the start of our next regular meeting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sharp. Yes, both Dr. Jones and I did get that email, and we know of your desire, but I think we were not planning to discuss it this meeting, but next meeting. Is that correct, Dr. Jones? Is that, is?
That's okay.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, won't get lost in the sauce. All right, we're back to voting on the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Any opposed or abstentions? All right, so we've adopted our agenda for this evening. Excellent. The next item on the agenda this evening is public comments and requests. Mr. Kimball, are there any?
We have none, ma'am.
All right. Have there been any letters that have come in since last time we were together or any of those kinds of things?
None, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Moving along to recognition and reports. Are there recognition and reports?
I'm sorry, did you call for comments on the 5.01?
I called for comments, public comments and requests, and there weren't any.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we reading this right now or what's the?
What do you mean?
The 5.01, the discussion time.
Well, that's when the public would come and talk to us for three minutes about things on their mind.
I'm sorry. I'm totally lost.
Are you lost? Okay, that's all right.
Go ahead.
Catch up.
I'm there.
Okay, very good.
I'm off.
Very good. Okay, so that's why we moved through that because we didn't have any folks that wanted to talk to us this evening. And no one's written us any letters. They're all on summer vacation at the beach somewhere. Recognitions and reports, do we have any this evening, Dr. Jones? All right, very good. Moving along to item seven, which is the consent agenda. Mr. Kimball.
Yes, ma'am. First item is personnel appointments. At Mount Daniel Elementary School, that the school board approve the following staff appointments for the 2013-14 school year. At Mount Daniel Elementary School, Marcela Fedora, part-time first-grade paraprofessional; Julia Fletchel, part-time first-grade paraprofessional; Kaplan Klein, part-time first-grade paraprofessional; Lacey Gandy, part-time PYP, Primary Years Program Coordinator; Haley Cowb, kindergarten teacher; Sabrina Riley, kindergarten teacher; Lauren McQueen, kindergarten teacher; Sue Smiley, Principal-Secretary; and Victoria Von Schrader, kindergarten paraprofessional. At Thomas Jefferson Elementary School, Robin Dickerson, ESOL teacher; Ariel Enick, Spanish teacher. At Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School, Amy McKee, speech and language pathologist; Sarah Smigelski, eighth-grade math teacher; and Dawn Tarter, family and consumer science teacher. At George Mason High School, Allison McKee, speech and language pathologist; Ursula Schubert, chemistry teacher and chemistry science teacher; and Stephen Whitcomb, math teacher. Resignations, that the school board accept the following staff resignation: Lisa Cortez, special education teacher at Mary Ellen Henderson effective the end of the 2012-2013 school year; and Mary Brown, seventh-grade language arts teacher, effective immediately. Long-term medical leave, that the school board approve long-term medical leave for a GM employee effective until December 31st, 2013. Extra pay for extra-duty assignments, that the school board approve the following EPED assignments for the 2013-2014 school year: one instructional leadership EPD assignment, CERT; one instructional EP, one instructional leadership EPD assignment gifted and talented at MEH; two extracurricular activity EPD assignments, George Mason; eight instructional leadership EPD assignments at Mount Daniel; and one extracurricular activity EPD assignment at Mount Daniel. Under student matters, non-resident tuition student, that the school board approve: one, non-resident tuition student, grade nine, George Mason High School for the 2013-14 school year; and interrupted residence, that the school board approve: the continued enrollment of a kindergarten student at Mount Daniel Elementary School during a home renovation under Policy 9.21. Interrupted residence, effective from mid-August until early 2014. And finally, technology resolution, that the school board adopt Resolution 2014-001, reimbursement resolution for state technology funds as presented.
Madam Chair, I'll move to adopt the consent agenda as read.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sharp. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Chaney. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. And are there any opposed or any abstentions? No, all right, thank you. The consent agenda has been approved for this evening. Next is a food service update. Dr. Jones, is that for you or is that Mr. Kane? Good evening, Mr. Kane. Thanks for joining us.
I'd like to start out by publicly apologizing to Mr. Chaney for calling you out of your name. I'm sorry. It won't happen again, I'm sure. I wanted to say, this school year that just passed has been a challenging school year for us because of the new USDA guidelines. We lost an average of 76 meals a day. Worked out to be like 10,000-something meals. Those meal losses were primarily from George Mason and Mary Ellen Henderson. We did, we were able to recover these meals somewhat around January. And then the USDA in mid-year switched the rules again to go back to the previous regulations. USDA right now has just released rules a la carte. I have not had opportunity to read all the rules. But we seem to be in a transitional phase right now with USDA. And it is my recommendation that we come off the National School Lunch Program for the middle school and the high school due to these regulation changes. The school lunch program across the country, those who own a national school lunch program, everybody is losing money, and it especially affects smaller systems. And the school lunch program was set up basically for free and reduce. And on the free and reduce, we're 93% paid, and we do about 7.5% to 8% free and reduce. It is my belief that one size does not fit all. And USDA does not care about any other person, like athletes or any of that matter. So, my recommendation was to continue to do our healthy meals, to take George Mason and Mary Ellen Henderson off of the program and to change the pricing to $3.50. Now, the free and reduce students would get a $3.50 credit that is daily and not accumulative. And we're also going to follow the Alaskan Hawaiian federal income guidelines for free and reduce per the school board. So, that is my update in a nutshell. And if anyone has questions, I'm more than willing to answer them to the best of my ability.
All right, I'm going to turn to my right and see if there are questions or comments. Mr. Lawrence.
So, you said USDA went one way, and then they went back to the way it was, but you still want out of the program? Is the idea that they can't figure out what they want right now, and you may go back with them later on? Because it seems like if it worked before and they're back to where they were.
Right now, USDA is experimenting with the rules and regulations. They're trying, because of the Hunger Act, they are trying to curb obesity in this country. But while they're doing this, there were programs like ours who are already ahead of the curve. They've changed the rules for instance. The rules last year, not the year that just ended, the year before, the way a free, the way a lunch was comprised was of three components, meaning that you had to have a meat or a meat alternate, meaning like a burger. You had to have a dairy product, and you had to have a fruit in or a vegetable. And you got up to five components, but a student had to pick three. This school year, the rules changed to where you had to have a fruit or vegetable to be counted as a meal. So, students before, for instance, get a peanut butter sandwich and a milk, and that would be considered a meal. Now, if they got a peanut butter sandwich and a milk, that is not considered a meal unless they have fruit or vegetable. On top of that, with these rules, we're now required to keep a complicated spreadsheet that they developed and stay within certain calorie guidelines. We were off by eight calories, and they refused. We were off by eight calories, and they refused and made us find another way until we could get in compliance. So with these regulations, and there were, because of the program that I run, we sometime fall into a gray area, and they don't know what to do. One of the main things that concern me, and I'm hoping I'm giving you your answer, one of the main things that concern me is I've been here for six years, and in that time, we have changed state reps five times out of six years. The reason this is of concern is because they have this rule that says, when we fall into a gray area or we're not quite meeting the guidelines, they say, "Long as you gave it your best effort." To me, that's very vague, because it depends on who says it's your best effort. Now, if they determine that you haven't met the best effort guideline, you can be required to give back all reimbursements for the whole year. I don't think that would look very good if we had to give back all reimbursements. That's left open and too much vagueness for me.
Yeah. Okay. No, that's a, that's a very good answer.
And actually, Mr. Lawrence, I think from Dr. Jones and my perspective, I'd really, again, like to praise Mr. Kane very, very much because the year we were in, 2012-2013, the new regulations and guidelines under USDA were at that point optional, okay? Which meant that the guidelines we were operating under before, we could have continued those throughout the year, and we would not have been penalized by that. Mr. Kane mentioned that, you know, he really got in front of the curve, and he said, "Let's go ahead and start implementing these new guidelines now so we don't get caught." If he hadn't have, hadn't done that, we would not have discovered the issue with the portion sizes and the, frankly, the undesirability of the meals that were, had to be prepared under the stringent guidelines. So we caught that early, and because it was still optional, what we did is we were able legally to revert back to the guidelines that we were using previously, which were still, you know, allowable. At this point, you know, mid-year, and Mr. Kane has been keeping Dr. Jones and me updated monthly on what's going on, and it, the story changes every month in terms of what USDA is doing, what the state is doing, what they're thinking about doing. It's really, it's in a state of flux right now, and going through this experience last year where the first four months of the year, we lost about $40,000, to be perfectly honest with you. And that, you know, thanks, you know, to the fact that Mr. Kane, you know, did implement this early, we caught it, we figured out that, "Look, this is not working." You know, we were able, able to adjust. What we know right now is that, is that they're still in a state of flux. We do not know where this is going to land, but we can see the general direction where it's, where it's going, which, as Mr. Kane mentioned, you know, extremely stringent, very prescriptive. And, you know, our concern is honestly that we can prepare meals that students, you know, won't give students enough food to eat, like Mr. Kane mentioned, the athletes, or that frankly, students just don't, will not eat and will not purchase.
Any other questions or issues on this end? Yeah.
So, Mr. Kane, in terms of withdrawing from the National School Lunch Plan, what, is there a financial impact as a result of that withdrawal that you can determine? Or will it all be made up by the proposed pricing? Will it be more or less revenue neutral, or...
Well, the proposed increase is to offset not getting federal reimbursements from that. But with two schools still being on the National School Lunch Program, the effect should be either neutral or blunted. But because we only have certain grades, because the fifth grade is moving back, and the eighth grade, because the fifth grade is moving back to TJ, the effect won't be as strong. So we try to make it neutral, and that would cover it.
Essentially, Mr. Castillo, in terms of budgeting for this year, and we, as you recall, you know, during our budget work sessions, we were, we were giving the board updates on this. We were looking at the amount of federal reimbursements that we were receiving at Mary Ellen Henderson and George Mason, not only this past year, but in previous years, looking at trends. We will not realize about, by my estimate, actually, it will, it will be slightly less than 52,000 because as Mr. Kane mentioned, one of our grade levels, the fifth grade, is going to slip from middle back down to elementary, and so that will help buffer the loss. So it'll be about $46,000 of unrealized reimbursement revenue. And as a result, Mr. Kane has, you know, has plans in place. Obviously, we're recommending, you know, a not insignificant increase in, in the meal price at the middle school and the high school. But Mr. Kane has also periodically updated Dr. Jones and me about, about strategies in order to, you know, A, continue to provide, you know, nutritious meals, that we're not going to all of a sudden just, you know, start, start, start serving, you know, food that is, that is not nutritious. And then also, because one of the things that we've learned this past year is that there are different, different demands from different student groups. Athletes, for example, you know, have different nutritional needs than, you know, than say like middle school girls or something like that. And he does have a plan, you know, as part of this to address that. But your question, it is about a loss of about $46,000 in meal reimbursements. But that we believe through offering desirable a la carte items and, and also just standard fixed meals, we can offset that. One of the things that really impressed me when talking with Mr. Kane is he spent a week doing field trips to local eateries that were within walking distance of the high school. I think he went to Baja Fresh, went to Subway, I think he even went to McDonald's, and identified the types of items that students were buying and their pricing structure. And part of, part of the plan is to provide very similar items in our cafeteria at probably about half the cost, or anyway, significantly less than otherwise. So Mr. Kane has really spent the better part of last year basically strategizing this and getting us into, in a, to a good place to proceed forward.
Mr. Castillo also visited two other school systems that were off the National School Lunch Program at the high school, and they wouldn't go back on because they enjoy the freedom and they can do what they want, and they make money.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone down here have a question? I'll start with Mr. Chaney.
Yeah, I just trust Mr. Kane more than I trust the USDA, so I would... His approach. I think it's pretty simple. I mean, we've got somebody here who knows what they're doing and has thought through all the dimensions, and I think we at least owe it to him to give him a try, and I think proof will be borne out by the kids and eating the meals, and we need to test that out.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Hasn't any comments?
Yeah, so I trust but verify Mr. Kane. The only, my only thought was I didn't, so, okay. If we were to raise the prices in this amount but stay in the National School Lunch Program, we would close that any deficit, lose deficit gap as well, right?
The issue there, as we realized last September through December, is sales. We wouldn't be making the sales. We would make it, and they wouldn't come.
The problem is USDA gets to dictate to me exactly what we can do. And I can give you an example. And some of these rules, I spent a lot of time arguing with USDA. One of the rules they have is, for instance, you're supposed to have a certain type of vegetable, different types of vegetables every day. Let's say dark greens three times a week, orange vegetables one time a week, beans or legumes once a week. These vegetables have to be available to all students at every time, every day. I don't have a problem with it on the, on the surface. But where it comes in line is when they say made available to every student, they mean when the student goes through the line, and I'll give you an example. We had taco salad. Our taco salad comes with dark green lettuce. And on that menu day with the taco salad, we had bean and cheese burritos. Well, we weren't able to count the dark green lettuce for that day because, because it was part of the entree, it doesn't count. So you have to come up with another dark green. And my opinion to them was that you should be concentrating more that it's a healthy meal and not whether, because in my opinion, they have access to the dark greens because you either choose bean and burrito, or you choose the taco salad. They disagree. They come up with hypotheticals like, "What if on our menu, they choose a yogurt parfait every single day?" That means they're not getting their vegetables every day, and you have to make something available to them. On a counterpoint, we offer a salad bar at the middle school. And so my argument was, okay, if you're going to count it according to your own rules, a veggie bar, you're able to count it twice as being available every day. And they said, "Well, are they able to mix the hot vegetables and the cold vegetables off the salad bar or the hotline?" And the answer to that was yes. So she had to go back and confer with her colleagues, and half the room, she said, "Agree with me," and the other half disagreed because I fell into a gray area because of the school systems don't normally do that.
Okay.
All right.
Well, so, all right, and I guess my other question is, can you assure the board that with this increase, that there will be significant increases in, you know, access and quality of food choices and things of that nature at the secondary school level especially? Not, not that it's just they're seeing the biggest increase for sure.
I can assure you the meals will still be healthy, and they will have access to quality food. I do that now. I'm very passionate about it, and I'm not going to lean towards selling cake every day or something like that to make it up. I believe that children should eat healthy meals. And one of my strategies is if you go out into, for instance, like Wendy's, you can get a hamburger with french fries, and I believe if you're going to get a hamburger, you should be able to get it with a salad. And none of the food places around here offer the hamburger fast with a salad.
I'm curious about the prices for a la carte items. Is that, does it just vary so wildly that it's hard to really quantify? Because, you know, say, particularly in the middle and high school, because of the increase in the lunch, and perhaps people were opting for the a la carte items anyway because they weren't happy with their choices, is there a similar increase in the prices on those for those items?
There's a minimum increase, but the prices would be about, about the same. I don't think it'd be, it won't be a major increase on the a la carte items. And the students that we lost from eating meals, my concern was, once a student decides we don't want it because the portions are not big enough, or it's not something that I want, then, like you, when you go to a restaurant, it's hard to get that customer back. So even if we stayed on the National School Lunch Program, my fear is it was going to continue to go in the wrong direction.
Hi, how are you?
Aye.
I just have two quick questions. One is, can you, I just want to be clear for the public that you will continue to use the old USDA standards to assure that you're serving healthy meals for the children, or what kind of standards will you use, just so parents know that?
I will still use USDA guidelines as much as possible. And when they're not, when they're not being used, USDA uses the American, um, um, it's not the Medical Association, the American, the American Diet, um, Diet Association, the guidelines, they're following, I'm not thinking of the association right now, but they follow those, well, they attempt to follow those guidelines. So we're not just going to be able to, we're not just going to say, like McDonald's says, something healthy, but it's not.
Right. I just want parents to understand that we're not just going to be winging it, that there is a set of standards you'll be observing, and just make sure those get on the website so when parents have questions, they'll know what to do.
No soda machines. Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, one of my plans is to get with Michael Palmero's and do some public announcements, and we also send them out to all the packets, to the schools, to all the students at home. And I'm sure still, nobody's going to be paying as much attention until when the school year starts.
Yeah.
And I'm already on the agenda for all the PTA meetings, because I like going to talk to those at the beginning of the school year to answer any questions.
Okay. That's great. And I do remember, because I had the pleasure of having several Fox Church residents with kids in middle and high school in my office environment during the last fall, the dissatisfaction with the new USDA regulations and what that brought our kids to, you know, to their meals. So I'm thrilled you're finding an innovative way around this. The last question I have is the effect of these increased costs on our staff and on parents. We've talked about what it is, the effect on our budget, but what the effect might be of these increases. Have we thought about that? Have we socialized it with parents or with the community? And the only reason I'm saying, I think a nickel is not, you know, which is 3% or 4% is not much, but the secondary school lunch going up 70 cents seems like a big leap to me. I just wanted to make sure that we had checked with the community, had some input, had some understanding of whether that was going to present a hardship for parents or not?
Well, I did put out a survey. I didn't get many responses. I did speak to parents at the PTAs, and their first concern with, with the meal prices was about free and reduced lunch. They didn't ask me any questions about how high it went. Their main concern from every parent that I talked to, even from visiting day when we were there last Saturday, they asked me, "What about free and reduced lunch?" And that's why I said we use a credit of $3.50 for them to use on a daily, but they only can use it towards a healthy meal. They can't just get all cookies with it or something like that, which is still the standard with USDA.
Good. All right. Thanks. That makes me feel better. I understand, and I see Maeve's face, that Maeve is here with us via Skype. Hi, Maeve. How are you? And I don't know, can you hear this well? Okay. And did you have any questions for Mr. Kane on this topic? Okay. All right. Yes, Mr. Sharp.
Quick clarification on the free and reduced standard. Is there some adjustment of those who qualify, the incomes that qualify in light of the, that there would be higher prices? Should there also be a correspondingly higher threshold for qualification?
No, I'm following the guidelines set by the federal government.
We are using the Alaska and Hawaii income guidelines, which is, sets the threshold higher.
Alaska and Hawaii federal guidelines also for those two states. I guess I'm thinking of it in the opposite way. Yes, for those who make, who don't meet the requirements that we currently have for the federal government here, Hawaii and Alaska has a higher threshold, and we're using those. And those will be programmed into the computer, so kids will, still won't know by using their access codes.
All right. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Kane.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. And thanks for your usual innovative approach. That's just great. All right. On the heels of that, shall we move along to item 8.02, which is approval of school meal and milk prices for fiscal year 14?
I'll move that the Foster City School Board approved the school meal and milk prices for 2013-2014 school year as presented in the attached memo.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. Is there a second for that motion? You pick whichever you'd like to take those seconds to put in the record?
I just have one request, and that is, that as fast as possible, the memo be published into actual numbers so that people can see what those numbers are.
Yeah. Yeah. Even though it's summer, we want to give people as much advance notice as possible. Thank you for that, Mr. Chaney. Are there any other comments or questions before we call the vote? All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And are there any opposed or abstentions? All right. Thanks very much. We've adopted school meal and milk prices for fiscal year 14. Next is the second reading and adoption of bylaw 2.23. This is a bylaw that is concerned with electronic participation in school board meetings and work sessions. And we have had this before the board and had a lively discussion about it a bit ago. We've made some changes to the policy, Dr. Jones and Mr. Horn have, and so it's been brought back to us now for second reading. And Dr. Jones, if you could please acquaint the community and the board with this new form.
Basically, what, what this is doing is allowing personal matters, emergency matter, where you can actually participate electronically, but it's only two times a year unless the General Assembly comes back and changes that. So, and that would be either a work session, a meeting, two meetings, or two work sessions, but it would only be two times a year that it would be allowable. And so those, what you're seeing reflected in the policy change is the language that came out of General Assembly.
All right. Very good. I think there's probably going to be some discussion of this, so let me throw the floor open before there's a motion for adoption.
Yeah. Oh, we should, we discussed before we have a motion?
We might as well, because I think, you know, there may be some changes to this. I don't know. But is there any more discussion? Last time we were together, there was some question on some members' parts about voting or not voting. If you were here electronically, is there a question about that, or has that been delayed? delayed?
Well, this doesn't include voting. Not that I, I mean, I don't recall seeing the word vote anywhere. Is that included under participation?
It is, actually. I asked VSB to clarify that for us at the last meeting, and full participation is what this policy allows.
Right.
Okay, then, I've just got three comments. First, I think we need a test to show that this can actually work and that people can actually participate. I mean, we've got Maeve here, who apparently can hear us, but, you know, she couldn't really participate right now unless you're sitting right next to the machine. And I understand part of this broadband access in this room isn't necessarily up to the standards of the general 19th century, but still, as we talked earlier, I'd like to just make it clear that this does include work sessions, which, you know, apparently it does. And also that it would be available to whoever the student representative is, not just the regular elected or appointed members of the board. But if this, if this does include voting, honestly, I'm probably going to vote against it because I just think that's a wrong policy. I think you should have to show up to vote.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sharp, any questions or comments on this end before I look the other way?
I'll just indicate that there are two avenues for justifying potential remote participation. And one of those avenues, number one in this group, is emergency or personal matter. And that's, that area is limited to two meetings or 25% of the overall. The second one does not have that two meetings per year to it, and that's, that's consistent with the state code, I think. I thank those who put this together for following that, that code very carefully. The second option allows for temporary or permanent disability or other medical condition to be a reason. And so the number of times at which the code recognizes that a member ought to be able to participate in a meeting is, is rather, rather extensive. Now, they do have protections for the integrity of the meeting, and that, and that those include that those who are present for the meeting must constitute a quorum, and they must consent to the person who is trying to participate in a remote, remote fashion. And as John indicated, if, if you have technical issues over whether the person can be heard by us and by the public, then that also is, is a disqualification for, for doing this. So I think we do need to have a, a facility that allows for us to do this. If this, this is not really new, only, only the personal matter area that we are looking at tonight is new. This has been around for a number of years, and it's, it's an option that we should make available to our members. And I think full participation was intended by the, by the state code. I, I think it's the right policy. It's consistent with, with what businesses are, are doing. And, and so, I, I think it's the way that we should go. But I certainly understand the concerns that there could be a manipulation or a misuse of the policy. It's just that the rest of the board members who are constituting the quorum need to be observant that, that the, that the conditions are, are in place and that we can move forward with the remote participant. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Castillo, anything to add or any comments?
Well, I think, given we're going to have 40 odd meetings, two is pretty manageable in terms of the threshold. I, I don't know whether a personal matter is whatever you say it is, whether it's business travel, I think that's kind of wide open. I do think if we're going to do this, we need to do it with the proper technology. There are many mainstream conferencing technologies. There's a new one called Zoom that's extremely low cost and easy to set up. It was coming to the forefront during the BART strikes last week. It's virtually free. But I, I think if, if we're going to enable this, then we need to make sure that as with all other technology related matters, we do it properly.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone on this end have anything to add or any questions? All right, very.
No, I do.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I, I absolutely oppose this. I did, I said so before. I think that there are a couple of things to consider here. One is, the opportunity for shenanigans, is how I described it, is one that should not be underestimated. I know that it doesn't seem possible or even likely, but it is something that you should consider. Literally, you're already kind of creating the potential for like, six-six votes, and this person could be an important vote, and if you just turn the lights off on it, then you turn off their dissent. And if you give people the opportunity to sort of not show up for meetings, the opportunity for shenanigans increases. I think that that's sort of a part, but not the biggest part of why we shouldn't do it. The biggest part of why we shouldn't do it is because, you know, look, the designated hitter rule's been around for a long time too. But it doesn't mean it's the right thing. As a matter of fact, an entire side of the Major League Baseball has said it's not. And, you know, there, look, I was a lead proponent of our push for technology funding about this time last year. This is not a technology issue, it's a governance issue, okay? Don't think that we're being, you know, like, sort of stodgy about this. It's about deciding how we govern. And this goes to sort of the heart of what we do as school board members, okay? The Congress doesn't allow for remote deliberation in voting. You know, I mean, I'm not saying that they don't allow for voting at all, it seems like nowadays, but, but, I mean, it's not like well-recognized legislative bodies haven't said, look, you have to be here to vote, okay? And I think there is great value in people being in front of their constituents and with their colleagues to deliberate and vote on issues. So I really don't think we should just lightly say, well, this is out there and it's available, let's do it. I mean, at the very least, I would love to have some benchmarking on this as well. How many places, how many school boards in Virginia are allowing for it? I don't know. I mean, I'm, I'm sure there are some, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe nearly all of them are doing it. But I just really don't think we should. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Simon, do you have any comments to make? Are you all good?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
As, as a follow-up, I'd like to suggest that as I plan to go to the VSB for their review of a recommendation that we've made concerning this to make it even more possible, that I would like to have Mr. Rasmick's comments, either take a, you know, what the comments were tonight from, from the, the recording that we've done, or if he, if he can send a revised and extended version of them to me, I'd be happy to take them along. I also will look into how prevalent this is, a practice across the state of Virginia, whether there are, are localities that try to, whether there are localities that by their local bylaws have decided that they should restrict their, their practice so that it is more restrictive than the code allows. And, and I think that would be consistent with what Mr. Rasmick is proposing. So, and I'll try to get that information back to you before I attend the meeting. That's all.
All right.
I think Mr. Lawrence is, is suggesting tweaks that are more restrictive. I'm, I'm suggesting we don't adopt it at all. But thank you, I mean, I appreciate it. I think they're important for, maybe it would change my mind, but I think, I just wanted to clarify.
Actually, I wasn't really trying to change your mind. I just wanted to, to say that I would do this as, as a matter of information for the board, and I certainly would, would try to convey Mr. Lawrence's concerns as well, make sure that they're available to me and available to the people that are reviewing this, the VSB.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Anything else, or otherwise I'll call for a motion on this? Yes, Mr. Lawrence?
Clear. I would support this if it did not include remote voting.
All right, thank you. Is there a motion? Hmm, kind of, yes.
And I, I just have to say, I agree with Mr. Castillo. There's plenty of technology for doing this in an effective way. I'm sorry that, that we've kind of, in a temporary way, I guess at the last minute tonight, done this to you, but we would certainly only implement it in ways that, because not only should, do we have to be able to hear you for this to work, but the entire audience has to be able to hear you. This is what the, the policy says, and so we would need to implement appropriate technologies, and they would need to be working in every instance. So, there you go. I think that's one of the protections of this policy, is not only does it have to be the right technology that's going to be working, but the, there has to be a quorum in the room, and that quorum has to vote in every instance to allow it. So I think that, you know, it's, it's pretty constrained, so. Thank you, Maeve. All right. Is there a motion?
I move that the school board approve second reading and adoption of bylaw 2.23, regular meetings and electronic participation in meetings from remote location as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chaney. And I'll call the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And are there any opposed?
Madam Chair.
I was going to ask for a roll call vote, but it's, it's okay.
Would you like a roll call vote?
Yeah, actually.
We can do that. Mr. Campbell, a roll call vote, please, for Mr. Rasmick.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Castillo.
Aye.
Ms. Chaney.
Yes.
Ms. Highland.
Opposed.
Okay. Ms. Carney.
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence.
No.
Mr. Rasmick.
No.
Mr. Sharp.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. And Mr. Sharp, we will take you up on your offer to discuss this further with VSB and others, and potentially come back with more information from the board, which we can use to amend this further if we choose, or, or not, as we may decide. All right. The next item on the agenda is selection of a delegate and alternate for the VSB Assembly in Williamsburg, generally held in November. And I'm looking for volunteers for that duty. Is there someone who would like to be our delegate and use their privileges to vote on important matters in Williamsburg? Karen, is that something you'd like to do?
Aye.
Good, all right, I was hoping so. All right. And now we're looking for an alternate. Is there someone else who'd like to participate down there in November? All right, Mr. Lawrence. So now, is, is there someone who would make a motion, please, to select Mr. Sharp and Mr. Lawrence for these duties?
I move that the school board approve the selection of Karen Sharp as VSB delegate and John Lawrence as VSB alternate to represent Falls Church City Public School Board at the VSB Delegate Assembly and Regional Meeting of the 2013 VSB Annual Convention.
Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
All right, very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And are there any opposed? No. Mr. Sharp, thank you for taking that on. You've been helping us with the VSB for a number of years, and I appreciate your persistence in that. And Mr. Lawrence, thank you for volunteering as well. To do that for the board, we look forward to hearing your feedback. Dr. Jones, a construction update, please. How are things going over at TJ?
Fun, awesome, part of it. Task one is right on schedule and just very exciting. We're actually, the tech team will start installing technology this week, late next week, the furniture actually all arrives. I mean, it's clicking along. And so task one is right where it needs to be. Task two, which I sent you a memo about the week before last, we halted last week. We've been halted this week, most of the building, and probably about halfway through next week. So we'll have about two and a half weeks to make up there. But as you remember, with task two, the original deadline timeline was December. I'm really pushing and hoping for October. I still very, still very confident that they're going to be able to be more aggressive in our timeline. It's just kind of a bummer to not see them all over there working. So, and we're working through that issue, though, and Hess is doing a great job. We have a Cherry Street meeting tomorrow night at Central Office, and that will be with SHW, Arcadis, and Hess will all be there. That's, I've called it an ASAC meeting, just because, so it doesn't get confusing for people. It's technically not really our first ASAC because we haven't approved our ASAC committee, but we've been working with this Cherry Street community, and there's, you know, 50 people that want to be involved right now. And I didn't feel like they're quite at the point where they're wanting to say who really wants to be on ASAC, because that's governed by our board policy. And then, of course, we'll have staff there as well, and Miss Laco and several staff members will be there tomorrow night. So it's just a bigger group, because we're not having to select an architect, which really is what ASAC is designed for. And then I will bring that to you probably at our August meeting with the official ASAC group. But that's tomorrow night. We also have, we've painted the inside of all of the trailers at TJ in preparation for pre-K. All the carpeting will be going down over this next week because we had to freshen up a bit. It's been, part of it was kind of almost a storage area semi this year. But that'll be all freshened up for pre-K. We've added in our pre-K play space with fencing. We've also added a little tricycle path, so that we're creating a temporary playground for pre-K, and that's appropriate, so that's all gone in. The tennis courts are well underway. They, they did the first section, which then has to cure for 28 days. We've completed the 28 days. Now they're on to the second step, and whatever they're doing this week, they actually, they're putting a layer of something, where they seal the cracks, and then it sits for another about 10 days, and then they'll be back in to really do the fun stuff where you start seeing it change. So we're right on target for our tennis courts. And we've also done the auxiliary gym refinishing. So everything's clicking along, very busy on every campus.
All right. Any questions for Dr. Jones? Sounds like you're making good progress. I drive by there just as often as I can to see what's going on. And the people in my household think it looks great.
Yeah, it's fun.
Particularly my kids, they like that new tile work outs there, although they wish it was yellow or some bright color.
It will be when they're done, actually.
Awesome.
It was an ASAC decision.
All right, thank you. Next, Dr. Jones, you may as well just roll into your superintendent's report for this evening.
Okay, really, we're just, you know, we have this huge summer schedule where everybody is moving and shifting and changing, and, but the fun part is summer school's well underway at, at our buildings. We do have everybody housed at Mount Daniel and MEH for some of the big programs, because TJ's closed, obviously. Daycare program is full, and Katie was able to accommodate most of our families. We still, I think, we're down to one week or two weeks out of those huge vacation weeks where we still had a waitlist we were trying to get through, but that's progressing well. And then our maintenance and our custodial staff are doing a great job. They're working as a team this summer. It's the second summer we've done the team clean and kind of team maintenance, where they're very job focused and task oriented, and doing a great job. They're ahead of schedule, so we'd love to hear that.
All right, very good. Thank you. Moving along to board and student liaison comments, let's start with Maeve this evening, since she's, can you hear us, Maeve? Great. Why don't you tell us what's on your mind, give your report?
That would be the humanities and the visual and performing arts people who are there for the summer. There was a joint college fair, so that was a very fun experience, and they've been enjoying their time there as well. So that's definitely something that the students who have the opportunity to participate in definitely enjoy their experience with that. Other than that, I know summer school is going on. I know some students are participating in EIP. That program started through George Mason University, started yesterday for the summer. And then also, we have a couple of students who are part of the Mustang Ambassadors Club at George Mason in contact with some of our new incoming students to help facilitate their transition to Mason in the fall. That's really all I have for everyone this week. And thank you so much. Hopefully you can hear me, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here and try to participate the best that I can.
Great, thanks. And I'm glad that you're down in tech and having a great time. It sounds like, I'm jealous of that, because I'm here. All right, very good. I'll-
Can I ask Maeve one question?
Can I ask Maeve one question?
Sure, sure.
Maeve, could you give the board just a little bit of background on what it is you're doing? I'm going to take a little privilege here, because it's really fascinating.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So the Governor's School for Agriculture is based in three, or five disciplinary areas: animal science, plant science, food science, agricultural economics, and agricultural engineering. So we take courses in all of those five disciplinary areas, and then we do labs and other outside activities that relate to those courses. So I've been to the livestock facilities at Virginia Tech. I've made bratwurst and stuff with the animals that they process, to have greenhouses, and a bunch of different fun stuff. I've also been able to enjoy the surrounding Blacksburg area at the Cascades, and am working on a group research project with the idea of fostering leadership, communication, problem-solving. We're working on areas of childhood obesity, sustainable renewable energy, and we actually write a 20-page paper and give a presentation with our groups and everything. That's sort of the culminating project that we do. All governor schools sort of have different culminating projects, but it's been a great experience. A lot of work, but definitely very interesting, and something that I probably wouldn't get the chance to study otherwise. And I really have been enjoying the policy aspect of it, and it's a very interdisciplinary field, and agriculture's huge in Virginia, so that's why we have a governor's school for it.
Great. Good for you. Awesome. Absolutely awesome. All right. I'm going to go to Mr. Chaney for board comments to start.
Just one thing for the record. We talked a little bit about it, and we were before the meeting. There seemed to be some issues with the online new financial management class that a number of people are taking this summer to accommodate the new requirements. If you could just look in and report back on those. I know you were aware of those, but just if you could report back formally on the issues of access and course quality, and what we might be able to do about it going forward.
Thank you. Mr. Rasmussen?
Thank you. So, just a couple quick things. One, first and foremost, I want to congratulate the chair for being willing to take on another year of leadership. I just wanted to say, first, thank you, Mr. Sharp, for your comments on leadership at the beginning of our election there, and your invitation for us to comment on it. I don't want anyone in the public or my colleagues on the board to view my not speaking to that subject prior to voting for Ms. Carney as anything other than I just believe in sort of governance, and if we have one candidate, didn't really feel like I needed to talk about it. But I am going to use this as an opportunity to just say a couple things now that you are the chair, and that's this. I would continue to challenge you over the next year to look at ways to improve how we govern. I think that you've done that in your first year as chair, but I think that we still have room for improvement, especially in the format of our meetings, to make sure that we're doing decision-making. That's primarily what we should be doing, especially in formal meetings, but I just want to congratulate you, and also want to thank Mr. Lawrence for being willing to serve. I think probably the most important part of being a vice chair, and I just say this because I served as one for a little while, is really the role of being able to step in for the chair in her absence and run a meeting. And one of the reasons why I was supportive of the idea of you running is because honestly, you held a leadership position for a long time, a long, long time, on the planning commission. It's really about sort of making sure the flow, the rules of order aren't just sort of an issue. So thank you for agreeing to serve. And finally, I really wasn't aware Mr. Castillo was interested in serving, and I'm glad to see that you were, and I would encourage you in the future, because you're going to be on the board for quite a while longer, and I hope you'll consider running again, that you'll also consider leadership opportunities in the future, because I think you've been a fantastic addition to the board. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp?
I wanted to mention that the visioning, community visioning project that we all, many of us participated in, on the 29th of June was, I found it to be very successful and an interesting and enlightening day. I wanted to thank both Ms. Carney and Dr. Jones for their hard work, and the entire planning committee. I know it was a lot of hours that you all put in, and I hope that, you know, we recognize the fruits of all your labors, because it was really, you know, I found it to be an interesting day, and I think a lot of good ideas came out of it. I wanted to also thank Ms. Carney and Dr. Jones for working with me this year as the vice chair, while I was the vice chair on the board. Working with you guys was great fun and not really very difficult, so I don't think Mr. Lawrence is going to have much trouble moving into this role. I don't want you to think that I disliked my job by not, you know, running again this year. I just felt since I am not running for reelection, it made sense that someone else stepped in, but I appreciated this year and everyone. I appreciated all the work that everyone did, so thank you.
Thank you. And down on this end, Justin, let's start with you.
Well, it seems like a long time now, but my first graduation at Constitution Hall was enlightening, and it was fun to see the flag dropping down for the first time. I would say, I thought the visioning exercise was a useful one. I was realizing there are a lot of things that we still haven't touched on, such as what school means in this day and age, many of the problems that we seem to have, or problems of success and growth, as opposed to decline and shrinking enrollments. I do think there was a very resonant message from all constituencies, students and parents alike, about a very related issue to the role of school, and that is of technology, how it's been presented, implemented, discussed, and integrated in the curriculum. And I think it behooves us to take that very seriously, because I think the legitimacy of a lot of things we're doing will ride on how well we execute that. I would say, from what I've seen of the IC program for government, from one of my kids, we have a long way to go on technology. We may be taking steps backwards. And other than that, set it on down low.
Thank you. Mr. Sharp?
First of all, I want to thank the chair for proposing to apply for the VSBA Board of the Year for the past year. I think it's a very, very well-deserved matter that this application should be brought forward, and certainly attribute a lot of our success to the leadership that we've had this past year. Just a few of the highlights include a 14% increase in budget, which was just way, way above what was typical in other parts of the state, and the TJ construction. We gained extremely, an extremely valuable addition to our schools, much increased over what the original contract was telling us that we could obtain for the money. And those two things stand out certainly very strongly, but there are many, many other reasons to support that application. The run for the schools, which is being prepared by a committee led by Debbie Hiscott with the Falls Church Education Foundation, is on September the 8th. And anyone who'd like to help with that, I know there's still being recruited people to help with various tasks that are associated there, please contact Debbie or me, and I'll be glad to try to get you engaged with that annual event. I was at the chamber meeting this morning, and there was just effusive praise for the community visioning. As you know, the current chair of the chamber was one of the panel members, and he particularly commented that he was very, very impressed with Dr. Jones' leadership, and that the commitment that the community was showing by coming in on a rather beautiful day, sort of midsummer, and spending all day, in most cases, at the meeting was just an outstanding show of commitment, something that he was, again, very, very highly praising. He also had other experiences with the city in trying to sell a revenue bond for his organization, which is not, which is a tax-exempt organization, and had great experience working with city staff and with bond counsel, indicating that the city's process for being able to obtain funding through that, through that source was smooth, very, very well-done, and he was encouraging that the city try to recruit additional exempt organizations to come to the city and take advantage of this facility that the city has. Mary Beth Conley was also at the event this morning, and she commented on the run for schools and on the visioning, and everyone was very much supportive of her role in bringing this off the staff of the chamber, and all the chamber members were very, very commending of Mary Beth's role in bringing off the community visioning. Tomorrow night, there is a CBC meeting, which is perhaps one of the first meetings focusing on the November election that CBC will have. I'm sorry, I don't have the location for that, because I'm going to be away.
Maybe they'll let your remote in.
I actually asked for that. I said, I said I could, I'm going to be in North Carolina for the wedding of my younger son, which is Saturday, and I did, I did offer to call in tomorrow night, so we'll see if they allow. There is precedent for that.
That's right. And if there's a quorum, and they vote to allow it. Mr. Lawrence?
First, let me thank the board for the confidence you showed in me, and- I was there for the visioning exercise as well, and I was amazed at the number of people who showed up at 8:30, stayed past 4:00. It was a gorgeous day, and I know that because I had to keep running home to walk a puppy, so every time I had to come back, I was reminded of just how nice it was outside. And as of just a few hours ago, I got an email from Mary Beth Conley, as I'm sure everybody else did, with a list of about six dates where, you know, if you didn't get your questions answered, you can come here. If you couldn't make it then, you can come now. So the follow-up is already begun, and I'm sure it's going to continue quite well. And the only other thing is, I spent yesterday morning and part of the afternoon with the Commission on Local Governments. They have to review, file a report, and vote on the boundary adjustment. So they came up, and they did a tour of the campus, of the property yard, and I don't know if Dr. Jones wants to remind people or tell people what happened, but they were, they were great. I mean, I talked to the commissioners and the staff, and they were very impressed with, A, the fact that Falls Church and Fairfax County were coming up as a united front, saying this is good, it's a win-win-win, and, you know, we want you to support it. And the commissioners seemed very, very friendly toward it. They won't vote till September, because they only meet every other month, but it seems like they'll have a vote before the referendum, and, you know, knock on wood, it'll be favorable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I do want to remind the members of the board and let the community know that the school board did submit a brief statement in support of the boundary adjustment, so we are on record in support of it. And it, I thought it was a fascinating process, and what a distinguished group they were that were on that local government commission. So I'm sure Wyatt will keep us up to date about that. I want to thank Charlotte Highland for her hard work as the vice chair. It was a pleasure, and I'll miss you in that role, and I won't say yet that I'll miss you when you leave the board, but you know I will. You've been a great contributor, and so thanks for that. With regard to the visioning forum, I just wanted to let folks know what to expect next and make a few comments about that. First, as folks mentioned, a lot of people were there, like about 150 people from the Falls Church community. And in the room, I spotted colleagues on the school board. I saw colleagues in the planning commission and from city council. I saw city staff. I saw school staff. I saw teachers and support staff. I saw parents. I saw candidates for school board and candidates for city council. I saw business folks, and I saw people who lived in the community and did not have a business and didn't have kids in the school. So it was really, it was a tremendous group of people, and the energy in the room was, to me, just palpable. So I do want to congratulate Dr. Jones. I want to congratulate Mary Beth Conley, who is, as always, awesome. And our planning committee, we had a planning committee of 18 people who represented the entire community to put the day together. And so we, for those folks who came, the topics we discussed in the agenda, the order of the day was not set by me or Dr. Jones or by this board, but rather by the community. The input received was from the community at large, and we've made a commitment to those folks that we'll keep them up to date, because the idea was that we would take their input and consider it as we put our work plan together for this year and potentially other years. Now, there is a boatload of data that was collected that day, and so Mary Beth and Dr. Jones are working feverishly to collate and summarize and evaluate and prioritize all of that, both for the community, for this board, for city council, and for other interested folks. So you will see some things coming out quite soon, and in time for us to look at that stuff during our work session and for our work plan. I will say that today, I did receive from Mary Eggers, who was one of our facilitators, the results of the post-survey, and I've asked Dr. Jones to get that to everybody. You may already have it in your inbox, but that was a quick survey for folks to see kind of their feedback about it, and I haven't even looked at it myself. But my quick look on the day of was that folks found that it was energizing, they felt like they had been heard, that they could share their ideas, and that there was a pretty good expectation that we'd actually do something with it, which I thought was good. So that was, you know, I think, great. So thanks to everybody. That was just terrific. I hope it's something that we'll get in the habit of doing every few years. I know Dave Snyder came up and mentioned to me that he thought that was the largest cross-community public assembly that, in the city, that he can remember. And so I think we did a good job of bringing everybody in and bringing the community together. I would say that kind of the things that stuck out to me as I walked around the room, some things that were quite interesting, was a lot of support for figuring out what to do with George Mason and getting that going. People were very interested in that. There was, I heard a lot of comments and saw on voting sheets and idea sheets, a lot of sentiment about this school board and city council finding a more collaborative way to work together, and a more positive way to work together in the future, and I think that was good. I don't, I can't remember. Anyway, a lot, stay tuned. A lot to come about that. A lot of rich feedback for us from the community from that experience. I also want to say that earlier in the month of June, one other Saturday, you can tell I don't have a life, because I'm spending my Saturday doing this stuff, I was invited to and attended a leadership summit in Richmond that was co-sponsored by Senator Mark Warner, our Lieutenant Governor Bill Bowling, and the University of Richmond President Edward Ayers. And it was a day, there were about 500 leaders from across the state of Virginia who came together to learn about education and workforce issues and challenges, and to brainstorm potential solutions and start a conversation in Virginia on those topics. And it was a distinguished group, full of energy and ideas and smarts. I came home, and I told my family, actually, I, my new crush is on Dr. Edward Ayers of the University of Richmond, who I had not met before and is one of the smartest and most passionate people about the value of higher education and the way we do it in Virginia that I've ever heard. If you have a chance ever to go hear him talk, do it. He was just spectacular. But that's going to be an ongoing conversation, and as things happen in that, and I hear things and learn things, I'll bring that back to this board, so you can hear about that. But that was a great honor to be able to participate in that. I want to remind my colleagues that the VSBA Education Conference is coming up in Richmond, and that's well worth the price of admission if you can fit it into your schedule. School board members from across the state, superintendent, staff, and others come together to learn from each other about the innovative things they're doing in their school division, to hear from education leadership down in Richmond and for other things. And so if you can fit it in, it's really a great, great thing to do. The last thing I want to do is to tell folks that Tony is going to be taking our work plan and accomplishments from this- plan and accomplishments from this year, the input from the visioning session, and other things, and will be drafting a work plan for us to have to begin our discussion on the twenty-third of July. If you, as a board member or a member of the community, have things that you think are priorities for the school board for the next year, please feel free to send those notes to Dr. Jones, so that she can have them ready as she starts to draft the work plan. We do have two work sessions this summer on the work plan, one the twenty-third of July, and then, is it the twenty-seventh of August? Anyway, we have a second one as well. So, send those things to her if you have them. And those are, those are my comments for this evening. And I think the next thing we're doing is approving some minutes from June eleventh. Oh, that's so great. Oh, as chairman, I ask unanimous consent of the school board to approve the minutes of June eleventh without objection. So ordered. Thank you, Mr. Rasmick. It's great to have a security blanket.
Yes.
All right. We have some materials for board review, which are interview enrollment totals, if members of the board and the community would want to take a look at those. I think we've seen those enrollment totals grow through the course of the year. The board is now going to move to a work session on the topic of technology, and after that, we'll adjourn for the evening.
We're moving down to the table, right?
Yeah.